Good evening and welcome to Neighborhood Board 14. Just a couple administrative announcements, please turn off your cellphone. And if you want to speak, please raise your hand, especially those on WebEx because I can't see you, but our neighborhood assistant can see you. And so raise your hand. Okay, with that, let's see, we have a quorum. Spencer?
Hello, I'll start with roll call. Ron Higa, present in person. Carol Kaapu.
Present.
Mine, Soydel Maguié, present in person. Brandon Mitsuda.
Brandon's not he's a proud father of twins and his twins are acting up, so we'll excuse him.
Congratulations, Brandon.
Congratulations, Brandon.
Chance Nalota.
Present.
Present in person. Henry Peng, present in person. Cora Yamamoto, present in person. Dale White.
Dale White's on a trip.
On vacation. Donald Mita, present in person. Daryl Cantrell, present in person. So we have nine and we do have a quorum.
Including your chair.
Oh, Chair Pong.
Thank you.
Over to you.
Anyway, thank you all for coming. Let's get started. Honolulu Fire Department, are you here or on Web?
We are here on the Web. Good evening, everyone. Dean Baldoviso, Honolulu Fire Department, Kualakini Fire Station, here to present the statistics for October 2023. Fires, structure fires, we had two. Zero wildland brush fires, one nuisance fire, one cooking fire, two activated alarms. Medical emergencies, we had 111, one motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, five motor vehicle crash or collisions. And that would be a fire safety tip for this month headed into the holiday season is going to deal with cooking safety. So keep everyone safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home cooking fires with more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve rank second and third, with both nearly having twice the daily average. Unattended cooking is by far the leading contributing factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. Some tips, stay in the kitchen and focus on the food when you're cooking on the stove top. Stay in the home when cooking your turkey and check it on, check on it frequently. If you want to fry a turkey, purchase it from a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does, that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use cooking oil are not safe. These fires use large amounts of oil at high temperatures which can cause devastating burns. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, electric fryer that has been listed by a qualified testing laboratory. And finally, do not leave fryers unattended when in use. Okay? Any questions for us?
Any questions by the board, of the audience? Oh, Cora?
Hello, is this on? Yeah. Captain, is the motor vehicle incident the one that happened today?
This would actually be from last month.
Oh, last month?
Yes, for the month of October. And then the one that happened earlier this morning would be counted towards next, next month's stats. Like next, next meeting, actually, we're in recess next meeting, I believe, but it would be counted towards the November stats.
Unfortunately, it's a fatality.
Any other questions for the board? Any from the audience, the public? No, thank you, Captain. Honolulu Police Department, are you here? HPD? Hey, if not, I know our favorite representative from the Board of Water Supply, in person, mind you, Iris, hi.
Favorite and only, I guess, huh? So yeah, no, I wanted to come in person since I haven't been here all year and this is our opportunity to say happy holidays. And we won't be here till January, right? So, yeah. I just have a main break report. So we had two main breaks in October. One was on October 18th and one was on October 19th, unfortunately at the same address, near 1440 Leva Drive. So that's the main break report. And just a general announcement. It's the, we're doing this early, 2024 poster and poetry contests. So we're launching our 2024 contest and it's, poster is open to grades K through six. The poetry is open from grades seven to 12. So the theme this year is our water, our home. So the deadline to enter is February 28, 2024. That's February 2, 28, 24. And so go to BoardOfWaterSupply.com/WCWContest for more information. So that's just my general announcement. Then if there's any questions.
Iris, um, can you do me a favor? Do us a favor? If any of the winners, I should say, come from our district, can you send me their names and maybe we can invite them to come down and we can recognize them?
That'd be great.
I think I'd like, sure like to see what their poetry is.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And I think we try to at least pass out calendars also.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't mind, then maybe you can ask them to come down so we can, you know, recognize them. And with their parents, of course.
Yeah, so that would be sometime in, I think, March or April, something after February. I'll let the communications know that.
Yes.
All right, so you know the so-called water saver equipment, like washing machines and all that? Is there a grace period that if you miss the so-called time that you can resubmit something to get the so-called rebate?
I'm gonna have to check on that, but I, I do realize I found that out myself. There is like a time period when you purchase the product.
Right.
You have to submit forms, you go online, you get the forms. I'm not sure if the deadline took it six months or how many months.
Yes.
But you're saying you passed the grace, this thing, but you're seeing if there's like a little leeway?
Yeah.
Okay. From it, uh, I'll ask that question, but do you have a timeline already that you've missed it by, a month, two months?
Um, no, um, it's a personal, we bought a washing machine, a water saving washing machine. Then she went in because we're changing our two toilets for water safety toilet. Then she saw this thing about the washing machine, but the date to submit the request was fast.
How many months after?
Yeah, about maybe a month, month and a half back.
Okay. I will get back to you. I'll try to give you a call because you want to wait till January.
Okay.
But yeah, and feel free to call the Board of Water Supply also to ask that question.
All right.
It's on the rebate.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe what you could do, Iris, is you can email Dawn too and email to me. We can make it as a general announcement for the, our district would be great. Oh, there is a rebate, huh?
There's rebates on, yeah, water saving devices.
Oh, well, sure like to know. Yeah.
I should notice of that.
That's okay. You can get this information. There was a question down there. Yes, Cora?
Just sort of out of curiosity, I noticed that when I go shopping, you know, supermarkets around here, a lot of people will bring big empty water containers, bottles, and get it refilled for drinking water. Um, and I just wondered why they're doing that because I thought the water was pretty, you know, pretty good here except for, you know, concerns about Red Hill, but, but, you know, it just kind of, I just realized, you know, every time I go, I see somebody with this big empty water container. Do you happen to know?
That's more of a personal preference by people. We do have safe water, even in the Red Hill area. That was only the Navy system. We, we're still good in the area. We've actually turned off sources in the area. So make sure that we don't draw up the water from the same area. But that's a lot of people's personal preferences because maybe within their own home, they might have old piping that may have taste, but the water we provide up to the meter is supposed to be good. But yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
Just wondered, you know, there was like some.
Question, yeah.
Different neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Thank you. Henry?
Not that you brought up the Red Hill anyway. Um, any real progress or positives or negatives from the Red Hill area, the pumping station and whatnot?
You know, I'm sorry I hadn't been following up on that. I know they've been defueling and there is probably information going through at my office. I just been on vacation, so I haven't read anything. But feel free to go to the BoardOfWaterSupply.com site. Um, there's an area that's like Red Hill updates. So you can always see what's been, what the communications office has put out currently. So BoardOfWaterSupply.com and I think it's almost right on the front page, right on that first part, Red Hill. Hyperlinks you to the Red Hill area that they have a lot of information. So sorry, I don't have a.
I'm more curious, like, I'm assuming that you guys do a lot more spot checking now in the Red Hill pumps and the wells itself? And wanted to see if there are positives and negatives from those results.
We do have monitor wells and we're looking to install more monitor wells. If there was a hit or, you know, any kind of thing, we would have, we would shut off a source. Um, the sources in that area are already off in precaution. It's not because we had a hit or anything. So I would think if we did have something to update that was a negative, we would have put out a notice while I was on vacation. So.
Thank you.
But yeah.
Any other questions on the board? Any from the public, the audience? Hey, Iris? No, thanks. Thanks for coming down. Nice to see you.
Again. Mine too.
Person.
I miss you.
We'll see you in January.
See you January.
All right.
Yeah, if I don't go on vacation.
Thank you. Is anybody from the Honolulu Police Department here? It's not. All right, uh, we have vacancies, vacancy in Sub District Four and Sub District Five. Anybody interested? Don't all jump up at once. Just not moving right along. Um, let's see, resident concerns. Any resident concerns? Yes, please. Can you do me a favor? Get to the mic over there. You just lower it down. Just give us your name and what is your concern? And we do have our city representative who's taking luminous notes there.
So I'm Janelle Horner. I live on Makua Kani Street, which is the entrance to Kamehameha Schools, the end of the boundary. Um, so, sorry.
That's good. Oh, oh, oh. Okay, it's okay.
The rain is following me. Okay, no worries.
That's okay. Don't get excited. You're starting with a bang. Go ahead. Your name?
Seven-year resident and homeowner. But the issue we're having on my street is an exploding feral cat colony.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Feral cat colony.
A feral, okay.
Yeah, exploding, like, it's getting really, really bad. And it's been getting worse over, I would say about two years. But it's to the point where as they multiply, it's gonna get worse. I just found out there's three pregnant cats. And so my thing is, I saw on the agenda, there's unfinished business for feral chickens. We have that too, but it's not as bad as the cat thing going on right now. Um, so how do I? It's actually on the cul-de-sac behind me, but because we have people eating the cats and they're not TNRing, it's just, or.
Give us, give us, give us a location again, one more time.
Makua Kani Street, which is the entrance to Kamehameha School for.
Wait, could you spell it?
Street?
Yeah.
M-A-K-A-K-A-N-E.
And is that, and is there a cross street?
Kualakini, behind Kamehameha Shop.
Oh.
The entrance to that road, but actually there's a cul-de-sac.
Okay, okay.
Because people were, um, they're all now and they're multiplying.
Can I ask this to you, for you, right after, see that gentleman there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. He's our city representative. And what you could do is just give him the location and then he can follow up with it.
Intuition, because I think there's about, you know.
Yeah.
Now, pretty much gonna.
I, I think it would, yeah, yeah. I think it would knows which department to refer that to. Yeah, thank, well, first of all, any questions from the board? Feral cats now? I thought we only had chicken and carrots. Okay, now back to cats. Okay, well, thank you very much. Any questions from the public? No, I guess. So if you give him, he can report back to us. I'll call it feral cats. Thank you. All right, any other concerns? Um, let me go through ones. I think Chance had a concern about a drainage. You wanna tell us his resolve?
Yes, thank you, Chair Pong. So at the intersection of Alpuni Street and Alani Street, I believe there's this storm drain that since, I believe, kind of late last month, I noticed it. Um, it looks like it was caved in, where the storm drainage on the manhole everything is gone. So I sent the issue as well as the pictures over to the DFM. Um, they let me know to, that if anything, the, it isn't a city-owned road. Um, so if we could go through your title company to, um, contact them and then speak with them in regards to getting the, the storm drain fixed. Um, so I mean, if there's any city reps or city council members or state reps may have any possible advice regarding, um, going through that process, going with it through the, going through the title company to get the storm drain repaired, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Any questions for the board? Actually, we're taking care of that. I know it's private property, yeah. One more thing too, I've already talked to Ed in regards, this is from Dale White on the corner of Makalani and Iholani Place. He said the stop signs are down, so Ed, if you can check out that and I'll give us a report back. Uh, let's see, one more last thing, just a resident concern. We had received from the Director of Department of Transportation, just for information, Bus Route 151, which is Chinatown and Kalawela? Kalawela will be now service Lower Laleha and Kualakini Street in Chinatown, just for information. I think that's still in our jurisdiction. Okay, Bus Route 151, which is Chinatown, Kalawela will be servicing Lower Laleha, Kualakini Street and Chinatown. So just for information. Any, any other resident concerns? About from the public? All right, thank you. All right, reports of members attendance at other meetings, anybody? I have one. I attended on behalf of Neighborhood Board 14, a very informative Council of Chairs. And three things I got, I got back, everybody was saying, you know, all their concerns and problems. I found out that the average meeting for neighborhood boards is more than three hours. And it kind of surprised, well, I was surprised, but anyway, more than three hours. I had made a recommendation that they should have a class on Robert's Rules of Problem and Procedure. It was, I think it's up to the chair to, to make sure the run, the meetings run smoothly and fast. And the last thing I just found out, we have $1,000 at our disposal. So if anybody, anybody want, could think of anything that we may need. No, it doesn't go through water and pastries and, you know, all that stuff. Something that we may need for our board, like, some of the suggestions were like a banner. We don't need a banner. I have a banner. It's eight feet long and we're gonna use it for the, at the parade. Uh, and we have signs, I take, thanks to Carol, that says, when we meet, if we wanna, oh, that Carol, where's Carol? Remember we got that, that sign that says we meet every second Monday at My Mind? Now we can put it back up if we want to.
That's true.
So those are, yeah, those are the kind of things that we can use the $1,000 for. So if you have any suggestions, not that we have to spend it now because I think the emphasis was if you don't spend it, give it back, because the Neighborhood Commission needs the money. So let me know. Okay? Yes? Yeah, go ahead.
Is that annually, $1,000 annually?
It's for this year. I, I don't, I was used, maybe I remember, but I never thought about it. We haven't spent any money.
Well, if, if we have, like, the kids come, you know, for the, if they're, they won the contest, we can get them a lay.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. Uh, Spencer, is that okay? Can we use the part of the $1,000 if, you know, for if someone gets recognized and we recognize them? Can we give them like a lay or something like that?
No, it's for outreach.
Okay, that answers your question. But you can bring a lay. Chance?
Um, I was gonna suggest if anything in regards to outreach, if we ever go do any sort of fairs or community events, it might be beneficial to possibly get like a tablecloth with Neighborhood Board 14 on it.
Is that okay, Spencer? All right. Why don't you look into it, Chance? Why don't you look into it?
Okay.
Yeah, see, we wouldn't eat it yet. We don't have any, but yeah, it's a good idea. That's kind of stuff. Anything else? Any other questions?
Chair?
Yes.
So.
Oh, Carol. Hi, Carol, yeah.
Yeah, so along with that, it might be nice to have some like little business cards or something that say, you know, where we meet, what time we meet and things like that that we could hand out.
Spencer? Yes? Is that for, for every, every member on the board, was actually, we all get cards, don't we?
No, I'm talking about with the table. If we have a table, like.
Oh, with the table?
Something to out to give to people to let them know when and where we meet.
The next time we have something like, I love Laleha, remember that?
Yep.
Donald and I remember that, right? We can pass it out, but we haven't had one of those in.
In a while.
Ages, ages. A good idea. Keep on thinking, people, okay? But anyway, just to let you know. Anything, anybody else have anything, any questions? Okay, let's move on. Um, Ompo, Carol.
Thank Daryl for volunteering to be our alternate representative to the CAC Ompo in the event that I can't make a meeting. It's every Monday, not every Monday, every month of the first Wednesday. And it's at 2:30. It's in person if you want, downtown, or virtually on Google Meet. Um, but if, also if anybody wants to attend the meeting, it's open to the public. Um, just go to the, you know, the highlighted links there in blue on the agenda. And, you know, everyone's welcome. There, to explain about the structure, there are two advisory committees about transportation on Oahu and one policy. The policy one actually votes on approving things. The advisory committee is, which is the Citizens Advisory Committee, which is what I'm representing you on, that is totally advisory, but, you know, we can bring up concerns. Um, and the other one is a technical advisory committee. And that's comprised of people from the different departments that have technical comments on the different plans and proposals, planning documents. So anyway, this past month, we met the first Wednesday. And the main business was to go over what the Policy Board had approved, which are the vision for the 2050 plan for transportation for Oahu and also the, um, plan goals. So just so you, you know, to get, give an idea of what the vision of the 25-year plan is. It says, "In 2050, Oahu's transportation system serves the health, economic, social, and cultural well-being of all people who live and visit the island with safe, reliable, and affordable multimodal travel choices. The network is equitably maintained and operated to be resilient to the effects of climate change and upholds our community's commitments to culture and the environment." So that's the overall vision. And I don't know if you want to hear all the plan goals. I don't know what our timeline is for tonight. Uh, there, there are seven goals that are fairly short. Um, no, I'll go ahead. Um, and this was endorsed last month by the Policy Board. First goal is to reduce serious injuries and traffic deaths to zero by 2050. Goal two, enhance the transportation network to increase active and public transportation. Goal three, provide an equitable and affordable transportation system. Goal four, adapt Oahu's transportation network to be resilient to the effects of climate change. Goal five, invest in maintenance to preserve transportation facilities. Goal six, integrate land use and transportation planning to provide a reliable and efficient multimodal transportation system. And finally, goal seven, achieve state and county commitments to the environment, health, and culture in the development, maintenance, and operation of the transportation system.
Does that include the rail?
Yes.
Any questions? Um, first of all, I want to thank Darren for volunteering to be our alternate representative. Thank you. I understand that we have to have board approval, but rather than have a motion, Spencer, can I just say, are there any objections or do I need a motion? Okay. Cora, you want to make a motion that we appoint?
I move that we designate Daryl Cantrell as the alternate, I can't read that far, uh, that the alternate to represent Neighborhood Board 14 to the Citizens Advisory Committee, Committee of the Oahu Metropolitan Transportation. Uh, what's the A?
That's good enough.
Yeah.
Ompo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chance. Okay. Uh, before any discussion? Darren, you want to say anything? No? Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, can I, we just have a? Spencer, we, can we have a hand, hand vote? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, congratulations, big round of applause for our alternate Ompo representative. Thank you. I like the word volunteering. How many years were you in the military? That's it. Thank you very much, Darren. All right, moving right along, Mayor's Representative, Edward Geral. A big agenda there, so you can go through after your report, any, anything on the unfinished businesses and new business.
Sure. Hello, Ann. Good evening. First off, I'll start off with the Mayor's Newsletter. It can be found at 1O, it can be found at 1Oahu.org. A few highlights from the Mayor's Newsletter this month. Affordable housing updates across Oahu, gaining a lot of momentum. Last month, there were about three groundbreakings, about 200 units coming online or going into construction. And these are affordable housing units. Um, another big story in there is the County Mayor's tour of Lahaina Wildfire Zone. I did get to talk to the mayor, you know, after his visit and he was, you know, very touched and he says, you know, heartbreaking, devastation, tragic. I mean, those are all words that, you know, kind of underscore what happened there. Doesn't really affect the true nature of what happened over there. I mean, it just kind of begins to describe it, really puts things into perspective. Um, but along those lines, you know, the mayor did kind of call together a group of, I mean, getting really information from all of the departments, how can we do a better job to prepare ourselves in the instance of any future natural disaster, including wildfires here on the island of Oahu. The next big story on there is the million-dollar grant award we got from the Bloomberg Philanthropies. Uh, and what that will go, so we were one of eight awardees out of 155 applicants. Um, and what that's gonna go towards a Wahipana, a Wahipana Grant, which is projects which kind of helps tell stories to, um, about, you know, special places here on this island. Um, and they're gonna kind of focus this, the initial launch in areas where our. And they're going to kind of focus this, the initial launch, in areas where are heavily touristy. Next item I have is about the Oahu's climate strategy, climate adaptation strategy. So, we are soliciting, so we did come out and report in November. We are soliciting for feedback. You can visit ClimateReadyOahu, that's one word, dot org. That website to provide feedback. Otherwise, they were doing a lot of in-person stuff earlier this month. There's only two opportunities to that, ones that Kamakana Lee over in Kapole, the other ones in YNI, at the YNI Makakeke. So, I'm not sure if we're going to make it out that way, but, you know, if you attend either of those events, you have an opportunity to write comments in person. Otherwise, also accepting comments online at ClimateReadyOahu.org. Last update from the Mayor's Newsletter is that there are some new city services available in Kapole. First one I'll give you a highlight on is a new convenience center, so waste disposal site over there in Komi Loop over in the Campbell Industrial Park. The other big update we have is extended hours of the Kapole Satellite City Hall. So, instead of being open eight to four how it has been for the past several years, it's going to now be open under seven, it's from seven AM to five PM on days where there's no holidays in the week, because we're trying to pilot a new, just to see how the uptake's going to be. And we're going to work around four, 10-hour workdays rather than eight, five, eight, five, sorry, five, eight-hour workdays. So, with that, we can get some extra hours over there in Kapole. And it's going to be a pilot that's more successful, something we hope to launch in other places, but probably not the shopping centers, where we have, wherever we have a Satellite City Hall and shopping center, you pretty much got to more or less follow their hours, yeah. So, those are the mayor, the updates from the Mayor's Letter, Newsletter. As far as updates goes, the crosswalk at Kokea Street, for this one, I have, I don't have an update for you. I know this board had requested a timeline. Right now, the, I mentioned in the last board meeting that the Department of Transportation was looking to pilot a new flashing signalization system on unmarked crosswalks to kind of help with pedestrian safety. They're trying to procure that work and pilot that crosswalk. That crosswalk, first crosswalk is going to be at Miru Kuakilihe Valley over there on School Street, School Street and Camp Four Road. Oh, Kamakana Fourth Road, sorry. And after that, they'll kind of move over to crosswalk, crosswalk at Kokea Street. I will follow up with DFM though, because I think, you know, what the Neighborhood Board requested was something more simpler. You know, kind of just restrike that crosswalk, rather than, you know, waiting for all those bells and whistles on a, on a flashing signalization. So, I will follow up on that. I do not have an update on, for you on that. Speeding on Mamalu Street. To the last one's comment about doing a red curb striping, there's actually a resolution being heard tomorrow at City Council, the Transportation Committee Resolution 23 dash 230. That committee hearing is actually going to take place tomorrow at 2:30 PM. And what the resolution kind of calls for is expanding the striping program, the red, the red curb painting program to all no parking zones across the island. So, not just, right now, it's just in designated loading zones and other regulated areas. So, there is an opportunity, I think, that's going to be, to testify around that, to kind of create that safe environment that you initially asked for, Chair Fall. That's going to happen tomorrow at 2:30. Otherwise, I don't have an update for you, but I think we will kind of move it into enforcement area.
That would include that area, but if it's passed.
If it's passed, correct.
Okay.
But if it's passed, I think there's still going to be some time to kind of pass up. I mean, when you talk about some of the deferred maintenance projects, you know, in the Level Heights area that often comes up, lane striping, signs missing, you know, signs going up, you know, a lot of it comes down to manpower. And, you know, so I think that's one of the reservations. I know that the Department of Facilities Maintenance has is, you know, I gotta do this and paint everything red and keep, keep all, paint all the no parking zones red and kind of keep maintaining that, you know, it's going to be.
I, I'm more happy to volunteer to do it.
That was another thing that came up when we were talking about the bill was people painting their own areas red for, for their own personal use and reasons, so.
Can't, can't do that, all right.
Well, HPD kind of, I mean, it does affect HPD enforcement, right?
Okay, we'll wait, oh, wait. But as long as, hopefully, we don't have an accident waiting to happen. How about the speeding one, since you're on Mamalu?
That wasn't, that didn't get raised. I will raise that.
Okay.
Look at both speeding, and then I think he had concerns about no parking too, right? Enforcement on both, right? Related sidewalks on Judge Street. Sidewalks on Judge Street. The city currently does not have a current project in that area. It does recognize that it was recognized, it was acknowledged and identified in the pedestrian plan for the area as a tier-two priority, but right now, there's no project underway for that, so I don't have a timeline for you. It's not even in planning and design yet. The planners over at ETS and DDC did mention that it is a difficult one to do, only because the size of the right-of-way, the drainage systems in the area, all that would have to be incorporated into the plan and design of that. You also have different property lines, if you will. Some people all the way up to the street, some people, you know, some people, there's a right-of-way in some projects. So, maybe require some condemnation, but a report will, that quarter or likely require a lot of, a lot of study and before it can even launch. Last item I have on the, I see on the agenda for me here is the four-way stop at intersection of Hala and Kapalama, Hala Drive and Kapalama Street. I do not, you know, that one unfortunately didn't make the referral list. I will make sure it makes it on the list, and I'll have an update for you in January. I apologize.
I'll keep it on the agenda. Okay, Don? Anything else?
I have a couple more, I think, that came up with community concerns. One is speeding on Puunui Avenue near 2437 Puunui. So, HPD did do a speed laser operation between October 18th and the 26th. At different hours during the day, during that period, HPD did not identify any speeding violations. HPD did ask for help, you know, to be notified if there is a possible violation. Maybe they can kind of identify what time periods. I think we talked about time period in the last meeting. They did try and look at those periods, but no observations of any speeding violations during that, during their operation. There was also talk, there was also requested, take a look at possible speed hump in that area. So, the ETS will, has acknowledged, I mean, has received the request and will be studying that area, the possible, first possible speed hump, working with Department of Transportation to install the, implement the speed bump. Last concern I had, I think, coming out of public concern that wasn't on the agenda, was maintenance of city sidewalks. And this is kind of, we're talking about. So, DPD concern, it confirmed that under right ordinance, right, ordinances, section 14 dash 3.5, the landowner is responsible for taking care of the, the area immediately in front, fronting their property. The sidewalk area on planter strip, I mean, fronting their properties. You know, some concerns is, hey, how do I cut the grass and, you know, and those kind of things. And the, what, what they kind of advise is, if you could check with your neighbors to request them with their vehicles, but any abandoned, you know, report any abandoned vehicles or illegal parking in the sidewalk area for their attention. We can hopefully help in that manner to help clear that area so we can keep the area maintained. You know, we are, we also, they also acknowledge that, you know, Level's kind of a tough area as far as having unimproved shoulders. I think that might have been some of the point as far as the erosion and who's responsible for those, maintenance of those things. And even then, some areas, they kind of highlight that sometimes the unimproved shoulder is actually personal property, is actually somebody's property and not necessarily the, right in the, right, the right-of-way in some, in some instances as well. But that said, you can report to the city anything that's not. And the city will address any kind of maintenance issue that's kind of above and beyond what the former, what the homeowner can be responsible for, you know, if they kind of, if they had maintained the area. Sorry, that's all, that's probably all I have on that.
Let me follow up your question. My understanding when I was working with the city, the homeowner is responsible for the grassy area between the sidewalk and the curb, correct? So, that, he has to maintain that, cut it down, whatever it is. When you go beyond the curb, that's in the street, between the street on the, you know.
In the public right-of-way?
Yeah, yeah. I, some of the homes, they, you know, they have along the curb and the street. I mean, you got weeds going up like, who's responsible for that?
You're talking about, so, I guess where the, where the pavement actually probably meets, probably meets the.
Yes. Here's your sidewalk, here's the grassy area, here's the curb. The curb is usually, you know, about one or two, I don't know how many inches, you know. Right on the curb in the corner, there, all these weeds coming up, and there's a street right next to it. Who's responsible with cutting that down?
Department of Facilities Maintenance.
So, all I have to do is call the, the city and say, hey, it's an eyesore. There are a lot of, because a lot of these, they're, they're being rent, these places have been rented, and the renters are not cutting it. And what's the name of it?
Department of Facilities Maintenance.
Yeah, it's on the top of the Level Heights. Okay, it's on the corner of Level Heights and O'omeikai. There we go. And, and a little further down too. It's really an eyesore. Really bad.
Jerome, do you have anything to add?
Yes, Jerome.
Sumara from DPD. So, Chair, what the debris and/or vegetation that you're talking about is in what's called the gutter. So, it's a curb and gutter.
Okay.
So, the curb is the part that sticks up.
Yeah.
That is the front of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
But the gutter, which is also catches the water on the roadway.
Yeah.
That's where a lot of the debris and silt and vegetation weeds grow. So, but it's the responsibility of DFM to clean that. So, they, they probably don't have enough staff because they're like 50% man in their department. So, they, but they'll eventually get around to it.
But that's, that's, that's the Department, it should complain, not just the regular complaint line?
You can call the complaint line, but DFM, the Facility Maintenance is probably the, the Roads Division.
Great. D, DFM Roads Division. Can I use your name? Okay.
I won't get you any after-service, but.
Thank, thank you, Jerome. I thought you had a cloud. Chance?
What is it? Their email is including the email that I CC'd you on regarding the, the storm drain. And they respond pretty quickly, so I can vouch for them. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Don?
On the easement, what I requested was, who maintains the dirt on the easement where the so-called vegetation grows? Because like I told you, that a homeowner cannot put anything on public land. Is that correct?
Sorry, let me defer to Jerome.
All right.
So, I think there's two different kind of situations. One is if there's a concrete sidewalk with a planter strip.
Right.
So, that, that's the locations where there's a curb and gutter, sidewalk.
No, we, no, no, we'll talk to you on about the first one.
So, that's the planter strip.
Right.
So, in the planter strip, the homeowner is responsible for maintaining that area, even if it gets eroded or gets compacted over time.
So, the, the question is, if I decide to put rocks.
Yes.
Where the so-called gravel is.
Yes.
I can do that?
Certain, there's certain criteria on what you can put in there. As long as it, the, the rocks, you say, or gravel doesn't protrude.
No, we flatten it out. No, we flatten it out. It's level.
Okay, it's level. That's fine.
So, we can?
Yes.
Because I, I want to tell you, one of my neighbors did that, and he got cited.
Yeah, so there's different kind of material that you, is allowed and not allowed.
Three-quarter inch rocks, you know, just a small rock.
Yes.
Yes. Because you look around, lots of places have it.
Yes.
But he was cited, and he had to remove it. And now you're telling me you can do it.
So, they have what is called a surface encroachment variance, which allows different types of landscaping, which is, that would qualify for. You can put ground cover, as long as the ground cover doesn't exceed a certain height.
So, I'm telling you, it's level. You keep on telling me about the height. I'm telling you, the surface is level. So, that is permitted, right? For what you're saying?
Certain types of material require what's called a surface encroachment variance. And I can bring you the regulation and the form, if you want your neighbor or friend to fill out the form and get that approved, but it has to be submitted to us. We will review it and issue the, and a lot of times, it's issued. I'm not saying it's a, it's hard to get, but you do, you do need to follow a procedure to get it approved.
No, because like I told you, we, the homeowner, have to maintain the easement, okay? And that means cutting the grass, make sure your is not tall, because if it goes tall, we can get cited for that from your department.
Yes.
All right? And we have, what, six, then with sixty days to repair it, or else you'll bring in your own people and you'll charge us the bill?
Something like that.
Right. No, no, I know. Because the question I'm saying is that we will maintain it. But the part is that if we cannot build the so-called, from the rain, the wash away the dirt, I'm saying the city is supposed to have some responsibility for that easement too. It's not only the homeowner, it's supposed to be the city.
Well, the ordinance is pretty specific. If you'd like to change the ordinance, I recommend you talk with a City Council member and, but we can, how about next meeting? I'll bring you the surface encroachment guidelines, and we can have an educational class on. What can be approved in the planter.
Okay, let me, let me interject. I think it's a great idea. I think a lot of us have this. And I know what John Donald's talking about, with some of my neighbors that put gravel in that area. And, you know, didn't get decided. I don't know why your, your neighbor got cited. But anyway, I think it'd be good for all of us to know what can we put in there. Some of them, I think they've been put, what's that, ground cover, that?
With dillia?
Yeah, with dillia. We're like wildfire over there.
And the problem is, different people, because they take pride in their home, and they, they know that they're responsible. They, they try to landscape it like their home, and they put different things that actually can cause a hazard. And it make it harder for even people to, when they park, if there's parking, on street parking, hard for them to open the car door and then step out into that.
Right.
So, some people put bushes and trees, and, you know, we have to cite them, so.
Who's up? I'll put on the agenda the new business, and I call it maintaining, what's that area? What do we call?
Planter strips.
The what?
Planter strips.
Planter strips? That's between the sidewalk and the curb.
And the curb.
Planter strips?
Yes.
Henry?
Brought up a nice point here. We have the have and have nots, okay? When I go to Lani Kai, there's rocks in the middle of that walkway between the road and their wall, okay? There's plants there and things like that. Are they been approved anyway?
Some have, some not. I would say the rocks, now you're talking about an unimproved shoulder, which is a grass shoulder, or it's just, you know, just dirt or bare ground. That's a different situation. The homeowner is still responsible for the frontage of their property. The rocks, as a general statement, is not allowed. They put it there to prevent people parking, okay? There are instances where small trees or shrubs are allowed. But again, you need a surface encroachment variance. So, I can cover that.
Why don't you bring that? I think we'll all be interested.
But, yes, we, that's a big problem in places like Lani Kai.
So, Henry, take away your big rocks. Anyway, thank you, Jerome, appreciate it.
Hey, Chair? Hello?
Oh, Carol, yes, Carol.
Hey, I just wanted to, um, thank you guys, the, um, drainage ditch on, um, hoof tailing, uh, is, it's been fixed, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other board members?
Yeah, I got one more.
Yeah, Donald?
You know, that, um, we'll go back to Judge Street. Okay? I have a letter, uh, email from the Department of Transportation. The question I have is that, how can a council member state in his monthly report that he has so-called authority, or he has the money to do the work? And now you come back and you're telling us that it's not. The email states about the three items that you talked about. So the question is, both our cities, why is the council person in our district, Mr., uh, Tyler, puts out in his monthly report that there will be a crosswalk on Judge Street? And he has the funds. And now you come back and you tell us, no. The city will not do anything because there are three factors. Okay? Because according to the, the email that was sent, the city has no plans to put any sidewalk on Judge Street. Okay, I asked which side, Maokah Makai, I still don't have an answer. I know Maokah is the best because there is room for a sidewalk. Makai does not have room for a sidewalk. So, you know, there's a, some, somehow, a loss where one city official says, I will do it, and I have the funds. And you, on the other side, said, no. We're not, we're not even considering the sidewalk.
I guess to correct, uh, just to correct, as a correction, I did indicate that it's a project, but there is no current, you know, there's, I mean, there's no current project underway. Um, this city does acknowledge that it was, sidewalk on Judge Street is identified in the city pedestrian plan for that area. But currently, as it stands, there's no current project underway on that. A lot of it has to do with capacity issues here at the city, um, as far as what we can do versus kind of what goes into the budget. Um, and you know, DDC is, and DTS are, they're both agencies that have big staffing issues.
Let me interject real quick, you, you're talking about sidewalks, that is still in the making, as you said. And Don, you're talking about crosswalk?
No, I'm talking about, I'm still, I'm sorry, it, the sidewalk on Judge Street. The one I brought up.
Yeah, okay, so you guys are talking about the same animal there.
The question I have, like I asked, why one department or one city saying, official saying that, yes, I will do it, I have the money. And now on the other side of the city says, no, we're not going to even think about it.
Yeah, I, I, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do, okay? Now we have a little debate here. Why don't we ask, during the next meeting, ask our council member what he means when he says he put that in his, what you might call his note?
It's in black and white.
Well, we'll let him, we'll let him.
Show you the.
No, no, no. I, I perfectly understand, I, I believe you. But since he has says that, yes, he does have the, the money and it's gonna go, and the, uh, city representative says, no, it's still in the making, let's see what, what he has to say. Is that okay? I mean, we can go back and forth all in this.
The other one is the marking of the crosswalk, the dividing line. Who has the responsibility for that? And why is we don't have the capacity to fulfill all these requirements? Because last week, I drove down Bishop Street. Honolulu. There's no marking, there's no dividing, it's terrible. I mean, you know, Honolulu is supposed to be our, our city. And yet, when you go through third world country, the roads are rough, no markings, I mean, what's going on with the city, I mean, you post make a budget.
That, that, Donald, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. What's, what's your question of, for Ed?
Question is, I want to know why we cannot maintain the marking on the streets. And I told you that I went on Bishop Street from Poly Highway all the way down to, uh, limits. And there's no marking, dividing the streets?
Okay, I think we understand your question, you have an answer to that?
So the department that's responsible for those, um, for the roadway is the same one that we just talked about as far as the Road Division of the Department of Facilities Maintenance.
So they're, they're the department that we should, uh, approach in regards to these type of questions?
Yes. So even when these, when these kind of comments come up during these neighborhood board meetings, those, that's where I refer them to.
Okay, when we do that, if you have any specific areas, we just address that and give it to that department?
Yes, or bring it up here and I'll, and I'll.
Yeah. Let's, let's move on, okay? Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ed. All right, next, um, under, oh, Councilmember Tam. Um, I think is a representative, yes.
Aloha Chair, aloha board members.
Hi, Ed.
Hey, it's Lynn Robinson for Councilmember Dos Santos Tam. Um, Brandon sends his regards. As everybody knows, he's home with two brand-new, beautiful, healthy babies. So, um, he'll, I'm sure he'll be joining you again in, in January. I will be brief, the council member wants to invite, um, everyone to the game room town hall that's happening tomorrow, November fourteenth, from six to eight PM at the Oahu Country Club. This is a meeting to, um, bring stakeholders and community members together to discuss Bill fifty-seven, uh, which will help the city penalize landlords who allow legal game room, game rooms on their property. And Bill fifty-eight, which would help facilitate collaboration between HPD and the Department of Planning and Permitting. Um, again, that's tomorrow at Oahu Country Club from six to eight PM. Um, um, before I forget, I did want to tell, well firstly, um, also for the record, for minutes purposes, I'll say out loud that the email for the Department of Facility Maintenance Roads is DFM Roads. So DFM R O A D S at honolulu.gov, I've also put that in the chat. So just so you have it handily, I know that Chance mentioned that that was, um, included in his email. Um, I will put my contact information in the chat as well. Chance, I would be happy to help you, or try to help you with that storm drain on the, uh, private property, if you can send me details. Sometimes these things get complicated, but if it's affecting other properties and, um, and, you know, city roads or, um, city parcels, um, sometimes we can get some help with that, so, um, please reach out, I know that you were kind of asked, that you were directed towards your council members, so I, I do all of our constituent services and I'd be happy to help with that. Um, also, I'm gonna put this out, I will put the link in the chat, but the primary urban center development plan has been released. And so there will be, um, time in the coming months for your, um, neighborhood board to weigh in. So I would encourage everybody to take a look at it. Um, I know that Councilmember Dos Santos Tam had a chance to review it very carefully on his recent travels, and he reported back to our team that he was pleasantly surprised. Um, he did have, you know, he will have some input, but he, um, would really appreciate the neighborhood board, um, weighing in. So again, I will give the, um, I'll, I'll give you the link for, um, that information. Um. Lastly, I guess, um, I, well, uh, the link to the, to the newsletter and all of council members newsletters are now in the chat. So if you go to that website, all of them recurrent, if anyone wants to make references to our November newsletter or any others. Um, it, you'll see in there that we're looking for suggestions for dog park locations. Um, we've had a lot of, um, people reach out about the, um, not being able to access our, um, city parks with dogs, so if anyone has any suggestions, please do that. I also want to ask that you please, uh, send anyone that might be interested in interning with our office. We're looking for fall interns. Um, and that can be anyone, you know, um, students of any ages, but certainly anyone not, you know, that might not be of a traditional age that's interested in policy and would like to join our diverse team. Um, they can reach out to me and, and maybe come join us. Uh, I think, I think that's all I have, I'd be happy to take any questions back to the council member.
Lynn, thanks a lot for your report, can you ask the council member to address, uh, Mr. Anita's, uh, I guess, concern in regards to what was in Councilmember Tam's newsletter versus what our city rep has said in regards to the improvement or construction of sidewalks on Judge Street? So we can clarify that? Because he's, that, my understanding, what, uh, Don said is that, uh, he's got the money, he's ready to go and build, so, but the city says not yet? So can you have him clarify that?
I absolutely can, um, as we well know, appropriations don't necessarily equate to projects getting kicked off.
Maybe we should hear from the council member.
Okay, I will get, I will.
There's a little.
A little need for clarification.
I understand, I'd be happy to take it back to him.
Appreciate it.
Get some clarification.
Any questions from the board?
Chair?
Carl, oh, yes, Carl.
Thank you, Lynn, uh, do you mind sending the links that you mentioned that you put in the chat to Chairman Fong, because when we were at the meeting, we're not online and you can't see.
Thank you very much, Carl.
Can't see the.
Yeah, send me the, send me the link. Because we, we don't, yeah, we, we can't get the link because we don't have a, any computer in like here.
I absolutely will do that, yeah.
Great, and I'll, I'll disseminate it to our board.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Yes, Chance?
Hi Lynn, um, I just want to express my appreciation for that, um, extension of a helping hand. Um, I'll be sure to email you regarding details, um, in regards to the storm drain that I'll, I'll put in straight on Alani. Um, I also want to check up with you folks, um, is there any follow-up regarding the Alani Hill Street crosswalk from DTS?
Um, can you include that in your email? I don't know off the top of my head, it's not ringing a bell. And if we don't have clarification, then I can put in another request.
Yeah, no worries, I can include that in the email, um, although I kind of want to see if you guys could possibly get an update to us, um, from DTS, uh, at January's meeting. Because I know this morning, we just had the tragic, um, traffic fatality at Alani Hill Street and school. Um, granted, it's not the same crosswalk, but it's still the same street, so it just brings up even more of a concern, I know. What is, when I brought this up to DTS, when it first came up like a while back, last, this passed me. Um, they had mentioned that it wasn't really much of any, or it wasn't, from their traffic study, it wasn't a area of concern. Um, and then when I brought it up again recently, I know I mentioned if it would take for somebody to, you know, essentially die with something done.
Chance, I interrupted, didn't, didn't we, didn't they put in a crosswalk at Alani Hill Street? That's in the.
Not, not a crosswalk, but, um, the, I know when I brought it up, I was seeing if any other additions could be done because there is speeding concerns and your misconcerns from.
Why don't we leave, give it to, uh, Ed?
Yeah, we can do that too.
Yeah, so you're talking about speeding in Alani Hill Street, because that's the street that's adjacent to the school.
Yes.
And I, I am familiar, so, put that on there, speeding, put speeding on there, not, not crosswalk.
It, it is a crosswalk, but you know, um, the concern, or the, the, the main topic, it was the crosswalk.
Okay.
Because if something could be done.
You got it?
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, it's not, anything from the audience? No, Lynn, thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving and have a great holiday season, be safe and healthy.
Thank you. You too. Uh, Senator Rhodes, Representative?
Can't hear you, Senator.
Is, is it Representative, Senator Rhodes' office, or Senator Rhodes?
It's Senator Rhodes.
Oh, okay, he's right in the middle there.
He was just having some tech issues, he'll be just a minute.
You're not muted, but no sound.
I think he's, what, he's muted, is that it?
No, he's not muted, but he's, we can't hear, there's no sound coming through, still no sound.
Senator Rhodes, can you hear us? Raise your hand. Raise two hands.
No, we can't hear him, but.
I guess he can't hear us, we can't hear him. What should we do, just let? Pass? Oh, I don't know, are we? Senator Rhodes, can you hear us? Okay, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip over him, if he comes, we'll put him back on. How about Senator Kim? Are you, Senator Kim here, or Representative? Yeah, we can barely hear you, Senator Kim. Louder? Little louder?
That's my maximum, can you hear?
There we go, that's it, that's it.
Okay, good, good. Good evening, everyone, hopefully Carl will get his sound working, um, when I get to my report. But, uh, my community report has been sent out to the Chair and board members. And again, if any community member would like it sent to them directly, since we don't come to the, I'm not at the meetings and have hard copies, uh, just send your email to my office and we will add you to the list and you will get a copy when we send it out to the Chair. I will go over some of the things, just touch upon that, you can get more information on the report itself, but an update on the Navy Red Hill defueling, uh, the Navy officials provided an update to a joint legislative committee, uh, at the Senate. And I sat in, and the key takeaways, of course, was that the defueling process is moving along accordingly to its timeline. And of course, the Navy reiterated its commitment to building trust within the community. Um, the Fuel Tank Advisory Committee next meeting is Wednesday, November fifteenth, from one to five PM at the Blaisdell Center Peacocky Room, or you can go, uh, via Zoom, and you can get that information from my report, it's in the report. Uh, interim for the legislature, or I'm sorry, for the Senate, we will be having a two-day special session, I'm sure Carl will touch upon that more. We will confirm two judges for the Hawaii State Supreme Court. And the governor has in fact sent those appointment names down to us. Update on the State Department of Transportation, as you are well aware, we, you folks did have a representative from DOT, Shelley Kunishege. She delivered her presentation, there were concerns about the no right turn continually on Liki Liki and School Street. So she did say that she will send out another crew to check that, and that she would like a representative from the Kalie, Kalie Valley Neighborhood Board, as well as the Leva Neighborhood Board, to accompany the crew, uh, so that you can point out what the problems are, uh, so they have a better idea. And we're looking at doing this around December first. And I told them that we wanted it to be during peak hours, yeah? Because during the rest of the day, there's not a backup like there is in the morning and in the afternoon. So we will continue to get that date to you. I don't know if your board has in fact, uh, named someone for that, but.
Yeah, Senator Kim, I actually, I've asked Carol Kaku, and he's, she's been in contact with the, uh.
Okay, good, great.
Yeah, and so, Carol, if you, anything you want to chime in on?
No, they, they haven't contacted me, but I did say yes, and, and I agreed with you, Senator, I, I said between four and six in the, in the evening would be probably a good time.
Okay, yeah, I, I tell them about seven thirty to about eight, eight thirty, or in the afternoon from about three thirty to six, so.
The morning one starts at six thirty AM when.
Six thirty, okay.
And I want to thank Carol for, uh, taking the lead. And I want to thank Carol for taking the lead in this. Thank you for following up, Senator Kim. So we'll see what happens. Okay.
Hey, a couple of things fraudulent electronic benefit transfers have been reported. And the state's Human Services Department has a list of tips to review in my committee report. So again, just be be aware about that. The Volunteer Legal Services will conduct free pop up legal advice clinic this Saturday. Walk-ins are welcome. And again, that information is in my committee report. You can find that. It will be 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Lona Kila Multipurpose Senior Center and walk-ins are welcome for that. Community updates, your Liliha Palama Christmas Parade will be happening on November 24th at 5:30. Unfortunately, I'll be on the mainland, so I won't be in the parade. And that's pretty much my report. Any questions?
Any any follow up or any update on eradication of parrots and feral chicken? I think.
We have a working group meeting that will be happening in December. So I will report on.
My understanding is that the only thing they got so far is go get a trap, trap these chickens.
Well, the city has it has the program now that you can get the traps. And the state has some money that we want to support the city and find out other ways in which we can eradicate the chickens. So hopefully.
It's a first step. My question is, once you trap them, what do they do with them?
Then you take it. You gotta take it in back to the city. And that's some of the.
Oh, no. What do you do with the chickens? You're gonna have chicken adobo?
Well, that's what the city has to determine on what they're going to do with the chickens. And so that's going to be part of the part of the.
I'm be facetious. I'm sorry, but you catch them. What do you do with them now?
Well, one of our senators said that, you know, you.
I I got I'm leaving it on the agenda. I like to see how we're going. Oh, we have. We have a question here. Darren.
Hi, Senator Kim. Question for you to address Janelle's question. Is it possible for us to add feral cats to that bill?
No, the bill is already passed and the working group is already the resolution. So you, yeah, you can't add anything. You'd have to have a new resolution or bill next session.
You heard in regards to one of our residents having concern about feral cats. I mean, I I remember a long time ago, but all of a sudden it's popped up again.
Well, feral cats have always been an issue, continue to be an issue. Whenever there's a hearing at the ledge, it's packed. There's a lot of cat lovers out there.
Don't don't cats like chickens?
Depends on how big they are.
Okay, anyway, we we have it on the agenda and maybe Darren, we can have a resolution and take care of the feral feral cats and everything that's feral out there. Okay, any any questions? All right. If not, Senator Kim, thank you very much and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you all and also happy holidays.
All right, moving right along. Is Senator Rhodes, are you? Hello, are you connected?
Still no sound.
He's not.
It's the first time I've heard Rhodes being speechless. The cat got his tongue.
The cat got his tongue.
Feral cat got his tongue.
All right. Have to let him go. Thanks. Okay, moving right along. Representative Akinuchi, Jenna?
Hi, Chair. Hi, everybody.
Hi. Yes, go ahead.
Great. Okay, starting with the things I know have been, I guess, first up, the longtime standing Liliokalani Botanical Garden Homeless Encampment. I know after last month's meeting, I actually called DOT and DFM separately, and I had a separate meeting with them to kind of sit down and talk about how, you know, especially at this board that I have been working with as a staff member and now as a representative. And I know this board brings it up whenever the encampments are seeing big and it's just kind of rotating. So I shared the fresh my frustration and the board's frustration about what we could do. It was a sort of productive meeting, if I'm being completely honest. You know, DOT committed to continuing to do their area, but you know, that's only the part under the bridge, immediately under the bridge where not most of the people are. DFM, you know, raised the concerns that it is a difficult area for them to get down to through the botanical garden and also to get to some of the places that are on the embankments of the stream, which I I told them, I understand that it's difficult for them to get equipment down there. What did come out of the meeting, I think DOT is going to try and help them coordinate some better access to get them down there. Both of them, both departments did commit to trying to get something scheduled to get down there, hopefully. I met with them a few weeks ago, so they were trying to target before the end of the year for the next sweep down there. They're also going to put me directly in touch with the service provider for the area that's supposed to be doing the homelessness outreach to try and, you know, make connections with the people who are living down there to see if we can kind of move them along. So a little bit of forward progress. I anticipate it's going to continue to be on the list, but just wanted to share that update that I am I I hear the board's frustration about how this has been on the agenda for so long. And I am trying to make some inroads, see if anyone has a better idea about what we can do. But I I think it's just a difficult area for them to monitor, but happy to continue to follow up on that and keep that top of mind for the departments. Secondly, so I know the Rosemary Parakeets thing is still under me. Again, happy to try again to get funding to address that issue in the next legislative session, which is starting really soon. So hopefully, maybe some additional things to report or when I when I have a bill number or something that maybe the board can track and hopefully submit testimony for, we'll definitely share that. But again, invasive species council, say that's a funding issue. So happy to try and look into that in the next legislative session. I heard Senator Kim share about the legal pop up clinic, so we'll skip that. And the last thing I just had was DCCA shared that they they're having their continuing condo Rama event to give information to condo owners. This one is in partnership. This is the Real Estate Commission is partnering with the Community Association Institute Hawaii Chapter for a webinar this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00. This is geared towards condo owners and free for everyone in the public. Speakers are going to be talking about, sorry, some of the I guess sessions that they're covering are going to be the impact of Lahaina fire on insurance premiums statewide, misinformation affecting community associations, effectively dealing with rogue boards and labor laws, labor laws surrounding hiring and firing. So this is kind of geared a little more towards owners, but I know we have all those or I have all those condos along New Wano Avenue. So if you know anybody, I'll share the links to register. And for more information, this is again, this is a free event that, you know, they just put together so people in condos can be aware of what's happening and their rights and what's going on in the industry. That's all I had. If there's any questions, happy to follow up on anything else.
Thank you. Thank you. Representative, any questions? Henry?
Hi, Jenna.
Hi.
You asked about suggestions, how to deal with the homeless situation? There's a one word I always like to use, which is vagrancy. Nobody, nobody likes to use that word, but to me, that would solve a lot of our problems. We we love people to come visit, but if you become a burden to society, you know what I mean? You don't contribute, but you only take. We don't want those type of people here in Hawaii. Because it's the cost of living is high enough as it is.
Any other questions? Comments? In the public? Not? Representative, thank you very much.
So Chair Fong, I'm going to try one more time. Can you hear me?
Hey, all right. Senator Rhodes, yes.
Thank you. Thanks for being patient with me. I did. I have no idea. My my mic that I've been using for years just quit working tonight. So. So last week, the Department of Health reported 630 new COVID cases with a seven day average of 69 cases a day. There were 10 additional deaths for the week. COVID-19 still is a top 10 cause of death in the country and has killed more than 1.1 million Americans. So I still strongly encourage everyone to get your shots. A relatively new one came out in September. It's tailored to the latest version of the latest strain of COVID. And when you're inside, especially, I mean, my my school is not a good example because so much wind blows through there that probably no one's going to get sick anyway. But when you're in enclosed spaces, if you're, especially if you're at risk or you live with someone who's at risk, masks are still advisable. Also, flu shots are available as well now. This is flu season coming up, and that's also a good idea, especially if you're getting into those older age brackets like like I am. As more than one person has mentioned, the legislative session is starting, the regular session is starting in January. So if you do have ideas for new bills, please contact my office. It's SenRhoads, S E N R H O A D S at capital with an O dot Hawaii dot gov, and we'll be happy to take a look for introduction purposes. And as Senator Kim mentioned, we are having a special session to confirm or not to Supreme Court justices. The hearing in the Judiciary Committee, which I chair, will be on Friday, the 17th, and then the special session itself will be on Monday and Tuesday after that. So as you're probably all aware, at 70, the Constitution, Hawaii Constitution prohibits you from serving in the judiciary past the age of 70. And two justices termed out Judge Justice Nakayama and Justice Wilson. So that's why we have two vacancies currently. And that's it for me. Thanks again for your patience and me figuring out my technical difficulties here.
Thank you very much, Senator Rhodes. Any questions from the board? From the public? No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy holidays. Take care.
Yep. All right, next, Representative from John Mazzuno's office? How about a Representative from Daniel Holt's office? Governor's representative? Spencer, can you find out if I know that our governor's representative, Dallas Univeros, did join us a few? Is he here? Are you? Are you here?
Hi, yeah, I'm a little dark. Can you see?
Oh, all right. Scratch my request. Welcome aboard. Nice seeing you again.
Aloha. Yes.
Go ahead.
Hey, everyone. I just want to provide a brief brief update. I'm going to send Gov's newsletter to the chairman's email so you all can receive it. But the efforts still continue from the Maui wildfires. So at this point, it's been a little over a month since the reopening of the West Side. So it's been a little bit of a gentle approach with all the feedback taken in on the opposition as well. So we're going to see hopefully more information from that. We do have a good story in our newsletter with the Department of Education, Department of Health, reopening schools in Lahaina, what they're doing. And also a topic that we're focusing on with HHFDC is the Fire Relief Housing Program, turning to the long term housing program. So Gov encourages any residents or any family members who know people who have been impacted, look into that program, which you can also find at Hawaii.gov. That's my report, and I'm here to take any question or comments that I can relay back to our team.
Well, good. Any questions from the board? Any from the public? If not, nice seeing you again. You're cordially invited to join us down here in Mai Mai on in January.
Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, it'd be great to see you again, but thank you. All right. Thank you very much. And last, do we have any representative from the First Congressional District Education Office? None? Okay, we'll just move along. I need a motion to approve the minutes of October 9th. Are there corrections, first of all? None, then I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 9th?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Move by. Henry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by chance. Any discussion? All's in favor, just raise your right hand. Any opposed? No oppositions, motion carried. Thank you very much. All right, we move on to unfinished business. We took care of item A, B, C, E, and H, which leaves the the good stuff for our representatives from DPP. Carol, thanks again for coming.
Aloha, Chair. Giro Sumatra, Department of Planning and Performing. An update for 1162 Hollow Drive. Since our last meeting, we had three interviews with some distinguished witnesses. Chair Fong, Carol Koppu, and Eric Wong. We met with our cooperation counsel and gathered some information. And we will continue to look for other witnesses that hopefully can help us pursue access to the property. I think Carol, you were going to get us a possible name of a neighbor.
Yeah, it's passed on already.
Okay. The other one is 2037 Liliha Street that home is still under appeal with the Board of Building Board of Appeals. So that's still a stop work order in place. 1604 Hanai Loop and 1532 Hanai Loop. As far as I know, is still in a stop work order. I and I was supposed to get whether one of them was under appeal or not. I'll find out. So as far as I know, that's status of all those alleged monster homes.
So real quick, 1604 Hanai and 2037 Liliha. They're on stop work order. I mean, they should be doing any type of construction or any work on that.
When we issue a stop work order, they're they are supposed to stop work completely.
Yes.
But we do allow them to do interior work that doesn't require a permit. Like if they're painting or doing flooring, that that type of interior work or even securing the property. So like there's no doors and some people can actually enter the property. I'm not saying that that's what's happening at these places. We do allow certain types of work.
They're appealing the decision of the DPP, which basically says you got you're not supposed to go any further. You're not supposed to construct that.
Correct.
So my question, more of a pragmatic question, they lose on the appeal. And we tell them tear it down?
Very, I don't know if the city has ever forced anyone to tear down.
There's a good first time.
They have pursued the correction, which is if they have to reduce the floor area, which requires them to basically chop off part of their house or remove a portion of their house, then that's their challenge. But that's a remedy. I'm not a attorney, so I don't want to give you a legal opinion on forcing people.
I'll leave that to the court counsel. And by the way, thank you very much for inviting me to do. I wasn't that much, you know, I don't know percent, but we have court counsel at, you know, the zooming for 1162. At least we got them involved.
Yeah, and it's actually like a pilot program too. It's not just for 1162 Hollow Drive.
Good.
Teaching our inspectors how to conduct this type of a more extensive interview technique that is has the potential to be used in court.
Okay.
So that that was an education process for our staff.
I I just hope, and I say it for the record, I just hope that if the appeal for the these three homes, they lose their appeal, that the city would do something and not just slap their hand.
Well, the the correction is they have to correct the violation.
Yeah.
If they lose their appeal, they have to correct the violation.
Okay.
And that in correcting that, if they were doing work while they're still in stop work, then they have to undo it. And then whatever the correction is.
You know what kind of time period we're talking about?
Uh, no.
I can't.
Well, the, the appeal process is, 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 is actually, it moves along, but there's quite a number of appeals. Since, since one time I reported, we revoked fourteen, actually thirteen, building permits for monster homes. So probably most of them will be appealed, not all of them have, probably most will be appealed, and each one of those have to be scheduled.
And the appeal goes to Circuit Court, because this is administrative hearing they're appealing from, right?
No, the appeal is a Building Board of Appeals.
Oh, building?
So it's an administrative process within the city.
How long does that take?
They, they schedule one every two weeks.
Okay.
It's a volunteer board.
And assume they lose there, they can appeal.
Right, then they go to court.
Circ, Circuit Court, and then they have a trial, and then the whole ten yards, right?
Yes.
Okay, I hope I'm still around. Okay, questions?
What is the timeframe now, if I put in a permit? When do I expect to get?
So residential, it's anywhere from, depending on the complexity of your, what you're doing, but anywhere from three to four months for a residential permit, or a commercial permit, it's about a year. So we're working on some process improvements as far as permitting. We should be coming out with a new permit software tracking system. That, that should come, come out in about six, six, six months at the early stage, and then it's gonna roll out to something bigger, think about eighteen, eighteen months, the full-blown rollout. What we're hoping is that sooner we can roll this out. Right now, if you're an applicant, so Henry, if you are gonna build a house, you will probably not be the applicant. You'll probably hire somebody to submit your permit, maybe it could be an architect or an engineer, or expediter. You could be a applicant if you're a owner builder, but in any case, right now, only the applicant can check on the status of the permit. So in the future though, we're gonna have this, a program where homeowner, applicant, developer, architect, engineer, even the contractor, they all can check the status of the permit, as long as you authorize them on the, in the system, so they can check on the status. So, so basically what happens is, any one of those folks I just named, they call us. Every time they, we have to answer the phone to, to answer a request on what's the status of the permit, that's less time we have devoted to the seventeen thousand permits we process in a year. So it, it does add up as far as a distraction for our staff.
Any other questions? Actually, I wanna compliment the DPP for taking, being proactive in this endeavor, so, you know, doing something, hopefully. Any questions? Well, we'll, I'll leave it on the agenda, and we'll see you in January, and hopefully we get some kind of results.
Okay. And we'll have the presentation on the Plantage Street.
Yes, yes, enlighten us. Okay, anything else? Anybody, any public questions? Thank you very much. Okay, um, under, that's, that's it for unfinished business. Under new business, we pretty much took care of A and B. Oh, I'm sorry.
Right here, can you hear me, Carol?
I can hear you, yep.
Okay.
So. Yeah, I think we just. Maybe eight o'clock, the school closes down.
Carol, I'm gonna sign off, so.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna sign off in a second too.
Okay. Happy holidays to you, take care.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, take care.
Aloha.
I'll entertain a motion that we add onto under new business, Agenda Item Number C, Bill fifty-seven and fifty-eight and Resolution three twenty-eight, dealing with illegal gambling. I need a second. Seconded by Henry. Discussion? Not? All those in favor? I think we better take a roll call, boy, on this one, right? We need two-thirds vote.
Chair Fong?
Add on Resolu, a Bill fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and Resolution three twenty-eight.
Chair Fong?
No, 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 it's, it's, it's Councilmember Tam's Resolu, uh, Bills. So, well, we wouldn't discuss it, that's the reason we put it on the agenda. I thought I had added it on, but it's not on the agenda. Yeah?
Yeah, this topic would kind of be an item of, that impacts a lot of people.
Yes.
So usually, we don't add those things to the agenda. We could've talked about it during Councilmember Tam's item, but, I mean, if you wanna go ahead, I can't stop you, but I was just advising you that you don't.
That seemed very diplomatic. So with, with that in mind, the, the Chair will take that advice under advisement, and unless there are any objections, why don't we just go, if you are interested, talk to Kara, she's gonna attend tomorrow, and make each other's known, and then on January, maybe it's too late, but we can take action if necessary. Is that okay with you, Kara?
That's fine.
Yeah, the only reason I was, I was gonna put it on was I saw Councilmembers', you know, newsletter, but it's gonna be covered.
Right.
Any objection to that? So I know we have a motion that's by Kara and seconded by Henry, would you like to withdraw your motion and withdraw your second?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. Any objections? If not, thank you for going. Alright, community organizations, Molly Hospital. How about St. Francis Medical Center? La Naquila. Gerald?
Yes, and thank you, Donald, for delivering the newsletters. I appreciate that. So La Naquila's busy, busy, busy. It's the holiday season, they had their show and sell, and they did a really good job. It was last, last month, and they had very good turnout. An example is that the Chinese Culture Club said that their membership has doubled. So just a lot of people are going, a lot of people are taking advantage of the services that they offer and enjoying the time. Senator Suzy Chan, or I, well, I don't, okay, the head of La Naquila Senior Center, Suzy, Suzanne Chan, Oakland, shared that they just went through the accreditation process, and they got flying colors all the way through. Everything's great. In fact, the, one of the, the folks that did the accreditation said that they were one of the best that they've ever seen. So doing well with that. And recently, they've had a lot of service projects from different groups that have come to help down at the center, and so thank you to all of those who have been doing things. For instance, Rotary did painting, another Rotary Club did seven raised gardens for them, there's been cleaning and all sorts of things going on at the center done by outside groups coming in and helping, and so they're very grateful for that. Going into the holidays, they have their Thanksgiving coming up for their staff, and then their Christmas party for their staff also coming up in the next couple of weeks. So unless there are any other questions, that's it.
Any questions for Carol? Thank you very much, Carol. Alright, moving right along, are there any, oh, friends of the Liliha Library, we will wait until Brandon comes back, we're still waiting for a official open house. Any other nonprofit organizations? If not, the next board meeting. Yes, Kara?
I recently went to the Liliha Library and got to talk to the, the person in charge, and she's a very nice woman, trying to remember her name now. Anyway, she is starting a new program there of talks and demonstrations. There was one by a pickle lady, you know, how to pickle, that, that went on last week, and there's also one on, you know, boosting your self-confidence by a toastmaster, but she's looking for people in the community who want to speak. You know, it's just sort of general education for the community and draws people into the library. So if you want to, you know, Chairman Fong, I'm sure you have a lot of things to share, you can, you can be a speaker, and anybody else, and if you know anyone, you know, just go to the library and ask to talk to the librarian, the head librarian.
It's a good idea, I'll go and see if I can volunteer. You wanna hear my, what I teach at the university?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I'll, I'll grade them too, right? Hear that? You got anything interesting?
There's actually one I'm going to, it's the, somebody who is doing how to preserve your photos, digital or, you know, whatever, and how to organize them, and this is somebody who does the archiving at Bishop Museum.
Good.
So, yep.
Good. Thank you very much. Thanks for going down, yeah. Do they still have those, I think it's called DVDs, you know, the, I like to go there, they have all these Samurai DVDs and, they do, right?
You can rent those.
It's only a dollar.
Yeah, you just can't return them through the slot.
Yeah, right. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Don?
New business?
Yeah.
Under line item A, I think we should just cross that off because it's a dead issue already.
What?
That's the sidewalk on Judge Street.
Okay.
We just, because according to the city, it's a dead issue.
I'll, I'll do that, this was your request to put it on, I'll, I'll take it off. Okay, any, anybody else, announcements? Just a couple of announcements. First of all, I wanna thank Olalelo and Jacob, a big round of applause for him, done a great job. Hey, yeah, you really do, I've, I've seen some others, and no comment. And you've been with us for a long time, even before the pandemic, right? Yeah, but your beard the same length. Oh, okay. And actually, I, I, for the record, I wanted to thank Comayamia Schools, because where I live, on the very top of Aleba Heights, right next to the boundary of Aleba Heights and Comayamia School, is a forest, literally a forest of trees, and after what happened in Lahaina, we were very concerned, so they took it upon themselves to cut back, I don't know, maybe at a hundred feet, you can really tell the difference. So I wanna thank Comayamia for taking the initiative to cut back on the trees, just hopefully they haven't made no fire, but just in case. Also, again, our next board meeting is on January eighth, same place, same time, so don't come here in December, you'll be all alone. And the final thing is I like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. Any other announcements? Not, I entertain a motion to adjourn? Nobody wants to go home? Move by.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Seconded by Henry. All in favor, raise your right hand? No opposition? Motion is carried, and everybody have a great evening and happy Thanksgiving again. Carol, we'll see you. Bye.
See you, Jen.